Alright, without further ado, let's quickly go over the agenda for today. We'll start with a short welcome, like we're having right now, and then have a quick recap on the previous week's meeting. Then we'll talk a little bit about some workgroups, and we'll get after that straight to the tasks to be spread around to everybody to join in on. And at the end, there's space for additional topics if there are any, some thoughts, feedback, and some conclusions. That's basically it, so... Let's hop over to the next slide for a bit of a recap of last week's meeting. I did put a little intro to the recording on YouTube, because initially, right after the meeting, I had a big feeling like, "Oh, I should have provided way more structure." Quite some people were focal on that it was just lacking structure, and way too open, and there was need for some guidance. But over the week, the longer it took and the more feedback came in, actually, yeah, there were also quite some people appreciative of, yeah, the level of openness and the input people can have. I think the fix for this is to have a workgroup focused on incubation. This was mentioned in chat as well by Cardano. And yeah, that's just the fix. Like, the people who are interested in shaping up the program itself can do that, focused, and those who don't really care about that and simply want to do stuff, they can focus on that. So I think that's a relatively simple solution. And every now and then, there will be, yeah, questions, so we'll just put questions forward to this meeting to be answered. And we had a little discussion about which tools to use, and the feedback form also provided room for indicating what people would prefer. It may have been a little bit biased, because Discord was very favorite, but it also took place on Discord, so that's selected a little bit perhaps. I'm in no way locked into Discord, but it is pretty straightforward. We can... Yeah, it's all in one place here, it feels decent and it works. I think if there is a need for switching, we can easily do so, for example Zoom got mentioned quite a lot. I think third place would be... I'm not even sure, it dropped down pretty quickly after Discord and Zoom. So I think for now, it will be Discord. And yeah, then onto the meeting notes. We did today only make the notes for last week's meeting on text. We did have the recording available, of course, so people who were interested were perfectly fine able to find it. And there was some discussion going on, which also recapped quite a bit of the meeting. But it would be nice if there's actual meeting notes available pretty quickly, after the meeting, relatively quickly. So I was wondering, would there be any volunteers taking up this task? That's perfectly fine, don't feel obliged, of course, if you don't want to.
First big chance.
I think after the meeting is done and is on YouTube, offers for tasks to be done will remain open. For those watching this on YouTube, if it hasn't been claimed yet, feel free to reach out.
Why Tevo already wrote in the chat that he will try to take notes?
Awesome! But with Discord, computers lagging, not sure how well I can do it. Yeah, fair enough, well, yeah, like I said, if you want, it will be available on YouTube afterwards, so that will create... Yeah, you can easily watch it back and then perhaps finish up if Discord somehow is lagging. A bit for even maybe to finish typing. I appreciate the effort there of Whitevoe of posting a link to the MyRobot where you're taking notes, but now I see you got a warning for posting a link. Great, we'll get that sorted. Yeah, awesome, then, yeah, if you take notes, that's great. And onto the next topic, like I mentioned a bit earlier. Yeah, for, to prevent that this meeting talks for a long time about something that maybe not everybody's interested in, it only makes sense to have some workgroups going on. And the first one, by nature, I would say, would be a workgroup focusing on incubating the Ambassador program itself. I made a little, very preliminary start on Notion. Let me check if it... Yeah, that works. It's just a start currently, that's some nice features, like, for example, you can put some meeting notes, so for example, the notes of last week are shared here. The recording of last week is documented, including the slides and the feedback form. It's an Notion page, over the past week, I've been looking around a bit on the... Doesn't this close? On what the platform offers on it, it's looking really good. I think it offers pretty much anything we could hope for. It has a task board, I put some preliminary tasks there, which we will get to later. I can make this into progress. It's a great website.
Yeah.
This dictionary just really wants to pop up. I want to drag it to "in progress", but it's not listening. That's fine.
Did you know Notion has a tasking board? Recently started testing out in Dework, if anybody knows about it. It's also something similar where you have tasks, but when you open up a task, you have option to automate it with Discord and also create like a history in the GitHub, so it's integrated both ways. And they are open to like community collaboration, so when you want to make bounties for tasks, there is like option in paying F and stuff. But I think integrating AGI token would be also possible, at least one, we are attempting to do it for the Cardano.
Okay.
So I'm wondering how much this Notion is able to be integrated?
I'm all for integrating and automating as much as possible, that saves work generally speaking, so yeah, I do have to look into that, but cool. And yeah, I think it would be a nice task for the incubation workgroup to get this whole environment set up. I did make a little attempt at integrating through Typeform. So just to make sure that we have like a public list with ambassadors or people who want to apply to it.
Peter, somebody was asking in the chat where they submit the meeting notes, so it sounds like Whitevoe was already doing that, but where do people, how do we manage claiming tasks so that we're not doing dual work?
I think that will be on Notion, Notion is perfectly capable of managing that. But I started setting it up today, so right now it's not. But yeah, the answer would be on Notion.
Oh, great, thanks.
So basically, the... It does require signup, so when you sign up, and it doesn't say something goes wrong, I'm not sure why it told me that. It creates an entry in the database, and then this includes an email address, and this email address I can invite users to the Notion as a guest. I was hoping to invite everybody as member, but turns out that's $100 a year per member, which is not ideal. So for now, it will be as guest, and you will still have access to everything and be able to add it and, yeah, have full access.
That's great, thank you.
There's some people who have experience with building on Notion, and I'm very eager to learn, and yeah, I hope to get this going in the next week.
Where people sign up, or is the link shared in event chat in order to get the user, request user access? Or how would that look like? And or where do we kind of work? You will drop a form later where we kind of create these people who want to be incubating this Notion site.
I'll pop the link to the Notion workspace in the event chat. That should do it. And at this Ambassador homepage, there's a signup here thingy. I'm not really sure why it was erroring before. Mandatory to enter. Great. Well, that's something to figure out. No, I did not add any. Great, right after this meeting, I will get that properly going. I'm not super sure where this... Yeah, it's a Typeform integration, and it was working before, as you can see. But yeah, the workspace homepage has a link for signing up. Yeah, I think the easiest is to, if you have interest in joining this workgroup of designing the Ambassador program itself, just shoot me a message on Discord. Then onto another workgroup, being the Community Podcast. This was mentioned last week by Architect of Neurowork, and... If he is around, let me check. He is, yeah, if you want to, you could perhaps explain a bit about it, what you're looking for, what you want to do, and how people can help out. Architects, are you here?
We can't, we can't quite hear you, is this timer? You're very, 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 very quiet.
Reach out in chat. Just a second to get this sorted out. And... Let's skip it for now, and we can come back to it later. That being said, are there by any chance other people who have an idea for a workgroup or a focus group on a topic they want to work on? Because now would be the time to bring it forth and perhaps share a bit on your ideas, if any.
I like that wiki idea, that seems like a... Oh man, something in this ecosystem, we could really use a describer in everything we're up to.
Yeah, absolutely, that's quite a daunting task, but I think it should be doable with a couple of people.
Yes, because you already have quite nice snippets of all the brands under the SingularityNet umbrella on Discord. I see that every channel has like a nice little description, but it would be good to maybe put it into like one document to kind of have a nice overview of every initiative. We could always update that document with relevant links to latest articles or something like that, so it's all on one page. I don't know if that would be useful for anyone, for me, definitely would, but just a suggestion.
I think it's a great suggestion, and it sounds useful to me, for sure. I mean, I do have a decent overview, but yeah. Yeah, I think that would be great, someplace which, yeah, if it's a wiki or a document, I mean, depends what name you give to it.
Oh yeah, I suppose, yeah, I mean, I guess we could put it in Note, I suppose. Yeah, like create a page in Note or somewhere there.
Yeah, it can be anywhere, I mean, I think Wiki would be so used, yeah, it wouldn't really matter what the platform is.
True, if it wasn't Wiki, it could be somewhere else, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, it could be GitHub or...
Yeah.
And these are just put out there, like if somebody feels like wanting to help out with any of this, also for those watching later on, do reach out, please.
What is the main purpose for Ambassador? Ambassadors clearly, are they then the people like who are trying to bring all the people together and like market what is on AGI? Or there is something specific or some experiment also going on here? So before we can jump into ideas.
Down. A lot of room for experimentation. Broadly speaking, spreading the word about the project, yeah, that would be the overarching plan. But what shape or form exactly, that's very open.
I think there's a big opportunity to just to enable more people to get to contribute, you know? Everybody in this community is so passionate about, or many people in this community are so passionate about AGI and beneficial Singularity, and we're not all AI devs, we can't all, you know, create an AI to run on the platform or be researching AGI. So this provides opportunities to participate and to contribute and to grow that mission and to make that bigger for more people that can contribute their expertise, you know, write an article or video or wiki or podcast. And then there's also, you know, this is an organization that's looking to become decentralized, so how do we start as a community, start taking ownership and making SingularityNet belong to everybody?
I thought somebody was about to echo and start speaking, but it seems to be muted now. And so, I'm not sure whether I should say "with Evo" or "Whitevoe", to be honest.
If you remember, my name is actually Tevo, but yes, it's Whitevoe. As a gamer name, I used to hold, still.
The answer being, there's a lot of room for experimentation. Would you have any ideas, or would you require more focused structure on what kind of workgroups that would be?
Well, I would like to start doing more like a data-oriented and a bit more structural and like project management, basically. And I'm learning to be a decentralized project management for quite some time now, and having that layer of knowing who is doing what, how well it's perceived and how well the projects are perceived, and taking that like knowledge as a craft and based on that, basically give different weights and powers on decision-making and then have like collective decision-making there. However, this is very centralizing activity, so I don't know, a bit... Careful to suggest any kind of direction at the start of this, these are my like... My purpose, I don't know how to call it.
It does sound to me like it, I mean, structural project management, decentralized project management, does sound to me like perhaps the incubation program could be interesting. It's of course not for me to decide, for you. But if you feel like it could be better to keep your powder dry for a bit, that's of course perfectly fine. And also, we don't have to define all workgroups right now, this will be something over time if anybody comes up with an idea and it's like, "Well, I want to take the charge on workgroup X", that's, yeah, there's room for that, and that's perfectly welcome.
So perhaps, I know that Haley is in charge of the Medium blog, if... Maybe I'm making it up, but I always see Haley writing nicely. So Haley, would you think it would be a good idea to maybe for us to create a list of specific topics so that we can start creating conversations online around somewhere on specific social media that could feed your blog somehow, or just trying to figure out how to get it started so that we start a conversation somewhere on social media? I mean, maybe a list of topics that are important for SingularityNet to put across to the public?
Yeah, it's a great idea. Yeah, it's a great idea, yeah. Creating conversation around those blogs and creating blogs around conversation that's happening, you know, both of those, you know, would be a perfect outreach for the SingularityNet blog and news space so that, you know, it's as pertinent as possible to what's interesting and that that information gets out there and spreads, absolutely, totally.
So yeah, maybe we could use your blog as like a springboard to maybe start talking about, or giving some comments and talking about, while we share your blogs, start some kind of larger conversation about how we perceive that. Or we could think about some topics together, could create a list.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Yes, I think so as well. Yeah, I get to take credit for all, you know, whenever our marketing team creates content, I generally am the poster, you're correct, but it's not, it's not me entirely. It's the whole team. But making that as relevant and as spreadable as possible is, yeah, that would be spectacular. I'd love to get some ideas on content. And then also, we'd love to reach out and have folks be able to create the content around the projects or the aspects of Singularity that they're passionate about and bring that into the SingularityNet blog as well, that would be incredible.
Oh, speaking on that, I really like the way the deep funding started. Is that somehow related to Ambassador program as like, I like to kind of map out or design the onboarding structures and like the product level, design how innovation funds kind of work, and deep funding is a pretty interesting product itself. So would that also fall under Ambassador program? Because yeah, to me, it's like a bit different spin-off, but still, it's kind of...
Well, they are separate. There's a lot of overlap on decentralization and transparency. I do think both of these are perfect, almost like playgrounds to experiment with these topics. But they are separate.
I think there will be quite some overlap as well. There's, you know, quite an opportunity for everybody to get involved in what's going on in deep, you know, be it offering expertise to a project or helping manage and onboard everything there is, or even creating resources for the AI developer community for SingularityNet. You know, there's lots of opportunities there for overlap.
Yeah, very true, and I think the main takeaway of the current deep funding round is that the form that people, the proposals need to fill in, that needs more structure and more, more hard requirements. And besides that, there's a need for experts to review the proposals before voting. So I feel like, in a way like Catalyst has, like the community advisors, some layer of expertise, yeah, as to filter for quality. And that is something which to me, the Ambassador program could also definitely play a role.
I have something to add on your guys' conversation for a wiki, can you guys hear me? Or something along those lines? Yeah, so I think it would be really cool, just kind of to piggyback off of what some other people have said here. Because SingularityNet, you know, it's so interconnected with all the spinoffs and everything, and it would be really cool to see the different ways in which you guys are collaborating. And something aesthetically pleasing that kind of comes to mind is if you guys have ever seen a video on like a gorse.io, and it like basically visualizes GitHub commits and things like that, and it's very like aesthetically pleasing and it shows you how a project grows, right? But if there was something from a top-down perspective that you would kind of... Like if you've ever seen a Prezi or something like that, it's like a version of PowerPoint where you literally jump down into something and then you are viewing different aspects. It would be really cool to have like some branch or tree structure, some cool like fractal understanding of how SingularityNet spinoffs are interacting and how they are collaborating and things along those lines. Obviously, this is very high level and probably very difficult to do, but just a thought.
I like it. I would like to join these meetings. I like it. I would like to join these meetings and, and listen what experts say and how they connect and relate. Because this is something I usually help to do, to kind of find relations and the activities and competences between, basically in like a hu- huge system.
Yeah, and, um, and even like, because SingularityNet, you know, your guys' base product is, is a marketplace of AI, right? It would be really cool to see how the different projects are using that marketplace and what algorithms are being used. Or, or how is really like, what people will often ask, I think, when I talk about this project, like how much of the blockchain is really being used? And to somehow quantify that and show, do you know, like just to, to bridge the real technical GitHub, looking at documentation into a visually aesthetic pattern, I think would be really cool.
It does sound really cool. Absolutely.
Obvi- obviously easier said than done, but, uh, yeah, just, uh, just like the, you guys are talking about blogs and wiki and seeing how everything's connected. I think it would be awesome to see like, uh, like, you know, blog, like there's layers, right? Blogs referencing documentation and/or, and this could be, you know, it seems like there's layers upon layers. But currently the people in the ecosystem, we kind of dig into this ourselves and it takes some legwork. But if you had like a, like, I'm almost thinking like, have you seen IOHK's homepage? They have all these fun graphical sort of presentations that are fun to play with. And, um, something like that for SingularityNet where you see a top-down perspective of a fractal of everything that's going on. You can kind of jump down and see, oh, this is what's Singularity Dow and how they're using AI and what type of algorithms the tradings happen. And this is Mindplex and all that, that sort of stuff. And, uh, yeah, obviously that's a lot of coordination, collaboration, but it would be really cool to see that at SingularityNet because of the, it's, they are spinoffs of SingularityNet, right? And there is this top, maybe not top-down, but there is this coordination that's going on with a central hub. And, uh, yeah, anyways, I digress.
And that's awesome. Uh, i- if you could, um, you know, find examples of the kind of, um, presentations you're, you're, you're talking about and link them in the chat, I would love to, to take a look at them. And, and Robert, your offer, that's awesome too. We should see how we can, um, coordinate, integrate that.
I will, uh, I will link, I believe it's a video from Crypto AI Profit on YouTube, that he sort of showed a gorse dot A O presentation for the history of the GitHub and, uh, in SingularityNet's GitHub. And I'll link that and then some other ideas. But yeah, I'll totally provide that. And, uh, I'm gonna get off here, but I really appreciate you guys. Love what you're doing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I don't know if you saw it, Peter, but Architective Network wanted to do a podcast brainstorming meeting on Friday at the same start time and on Discord.
That would be very welcome. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, same time being, um, eighteen UTC.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, let's, let me know that. So step one, getting a microphone.
Um, and then, uh, he puts some, cool, thanks. Thanks Tanner. Um, he puts some background notes on the podcast as well, that we can add to the notions, um, uh, information.
Absolutely.
Cool.
And Robert has commenting on, uh, on, uh, network physicalizations, um, with a package he has written.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
All right, um. Yeah, once again, if there's, uh, at a later point in time, uh, ideas popping up for, for work groups, don't hesitate to, um, to reach out and, uh, and, and yeah, take charge. Um, for now, it's time to move on to, um, a little bit more concrete stuff, um. Based on last week's, uh, feedback, uh, the idea for this meeting is to also get the distribution of, uh, or at least assigning of tasks going. And as mentioned, uh, last week, there's, um, sixty-two and a half, uh, thousand HIX for month one, um, available. And my intention is to, right now, did you join either this meeting or, um, if some tasks didn't get picked up during this week, to assign half of them. And I provided a bit of structure on that instead of, um, awaiting input. Uh, so there, there was quite a bit of interest on the translation side of thing, things, um, the most, yeah, it's, it's all, uh, a ton of different languages. So we do need to select a bit, um, which languages we would like to cover. And I think there's, uh, three very, um, very good, uh, very well-suited articles, uh, for this. Uh, one of them being very huge, so that's gonna be a daunting task. Um, I'm sure most of you guys, um, have seen this one. It's a bit of a beast, like it's, uh, it's a long one, um. But it's, it's amazing content and I think, yeah, having that available in other languages, that would be really great. And then there's the operations update, which goes into the, um, milestones for the remainder of the year. It's also, yeah, amazing, uh, content in my eyes. And there's the block on the deep funding voting procedure and, um, how everything works. Which is, I mean, it's deep funding, that's, that's very important to me as well. And I think to SingularityNet, um, as well. So I figured these three articles would be, yeah, decent, uh, starting point to get some translation going. And I do think we should settle on which languages, um. I included, um, yeah, based on the, the feedback we're getting, uh, Russian and Portuguese are, are pretty much, uh, given and will, and will be needed. And then there's, uh, I included, uh, Spanish, Chinese and French. Uh, would be open for, for suggestions if there's any. I'm not sure if there's in the current group, uh, people who are interested in translating.
I think these are great, great, um, great choice of articles, definitely, um, important ones. Especially the operations update, the voting blog, very timely, and the ecosystem update is good too. Um, and, uh, I have no opinion on languages, but.
I figured to, um, not completely take the full month's balance, um, away. Yeah, I, I kind of ended up at, um, seven hundred fifty HIX for, for translation. The equivalent of about fifty dollars, forty to fifty. And then to afterwards, once the translation is submitted, it also needs to be checked before we can push it out. And I made a bit of an estimate there myself, but would be open to, uh, suggestions, um, to have about twenty-five percent of the, um, seven hundred fifty HIX for, uh, for performing like the check and the verification. And you thought so?
There are several groups, I know, come again with the Cardano stuff. But, uh, we created with SARM Network after downholds, um, which are like Eastern Hemisphere and African downholds and, and then Latam downholds and all of them kind of also do some translations. So either, I don't know how far you are in like African continent. But from these names, I think Spanish, Chinese, French, Portuguese, uh, are, I could, uh, ask if anybody interested in translating them, if that is something needed. Uh, for Russians, I don't think I know anybody.
How were these languages chosen again? Is, um, because there's a, there's a lot of interest from those countries in SingularityNet? Or how, how, what was the decision?
Yeah, that's the, well, first of all, it's not the final decision. It's just an initial, uh, yeah. Um, but yeah, based on interest.
Got it, yeah.
Would you suggest others?
Vietnamese.
Um, decent amount of mentions on this, um, ambassador interest form, mentioning Vietnamese.
I myself have no, like, uh, good, like, specific connections, but I know there is a strong like developer community and thousands of people who are like basically sitting down and doing hard work and pulling people together, coordinating, writing stuff. So, and it's, I know it is getting, looks like it's getting popular to, to do like cryptocurrency-related work. In Vietnamese.
That's cool. I had no idea.
Nox is actually Vietnamese. Very good. I can ask around because my writing is not so good. Yeah, awesome. Um, so just, uh, the final check, uh, on the current call, there's nobody interested in, uh, translating. Is that correct?
Um, I just wanted to add something. Um, contrary to many people's beliefs, uh, nowadays, Google Translate really does almost perfect work. So, um, that is always one option, at least to get it ninety-nine percent right. But it really performs, you know, so much better than it did even just a year ago or two years ago. So that's definitely one way to do it possibly for free. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty close. At least for Chinese, it's, um, good ninety-nine percent, so.
I mean, it's pretty easy to do, uh, a B test there, I guess, like, just. Have somebody translate with Google Translate?
Like one way to do it, um, would, you know, that could be time-saving and, you know, also save resources is to kind of go through, uh, Google Translate and then just have a human just check it over and then they just, uh, kind of cross the Ts and dot the Is figuratively speaking, you know?
You know, I, I think that's a great tool for somebody to use. I still think, you know, just the time spent, um, putting it into, uh, really understandable, you know, massaging the Google into something that, that actually really reflects what's there. I think that's worth, you know, worth incentivizing, you know, worth, worth somebody taking the time.
Hmm. Yeah, I do agree it's worth incentivizing. At the same time, if it's, yeah, perfectly fine to automate, then, then, yeah, why? But we can, we can simply check for that, I guess. Right? If we get translations going and then compare them to Google Translate and then have a native speaker assess the proper differences, yeah?
Yeah, that would be the cheap and easy way and fast way to do it. From a business perspective, say.
Yeah, fair. Yeah, understood, um.
Yeah, but from business perspective, you don't want any mistakes in there and to make sure it hasn't have any mistakes in there. It's like going into a restaurant and, uh, when there have typos in there. You don't think of the restaurant highly when it has lots of typos in there or like misspelled words or stuff. In business also, like if you have something translated, then it should be like, uh, we can, yeah, like, I'm agree that we can use the basis of it, but somebody definitely who actually knows the language should go through it before it's published anywhere.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, from a standpoint of, uh, saving time and resources, probably you would enter that into Google and you'd get the output and then you would have someone look over that, you know, word by word. And they would be able to curate that much quicker and just as accurately. Uh, so, you know, it would just save a bunch of time and money.
Yeah, noted. Um, well, to have some proper comparison material, I do think for, for, at least for this month, I will put these, um, just the current sheet that will be put out as, as tasks which, uh, people can sign up for. And then we can actually compare the two, um, like the, the human versus, like solo human versus, uh, Google Plus human. Um. Onto the next. Um, I, uh, over the past week, a couple of times we were talking about this, um, video segment by, um, Dr. Matt Igle, he's, um, the chief AI, uh, AI officer of SingularityNet. And his piece in the pod leading meeting was, was amazing. Uh, it's, it's like twenty minutes long. Uh, so it's, yeah, it's not the shortest, um. And it's, it's packed with information and, and yeah, it's, it's amazing. And I figured it would be a nice task to, um, um, to have somebody create a concise and then comprehensive video out of it. And to put up some tokens as a reward for that. And I wasn't quite sure if, um, it would make sense for a task like this to have, um, one person do it or perhaps have two, um, people do it. If there's anybody out there who feels like, nah, could have a look at that and, uh, create a, uh, like, I was thinking the twenty-minute segment, I think it can be put down, like, yeah, ten minutes tops-ish, uh, needs a bit of, uh, puzzling. Would that be something anybody here is interested in? And if not, uh, I'll put it on the, uh, out in the open for the people joining in later through YouTube. And another thing, um, I figured that could be nice, uh, would, uh, be a challenge to make, um, one-minute shorts out of the meeting because it touches, basically it touches on the whole ecosystem. And it dives into, yeah, everything over the, what is it? Two hour twenty minutes, um, the video is. And that's a, yeah, huge chunk of content. So I figured it could be a nice challenge to make some shorts out of that, um. Did a bit of math and, um, yeah, I figured four hundred HIX each would be somewhat, um, decent amount of reward for that. And then allowing for up to twenty submissions. And based on, uh, results, let's say, the, the views or likes, um, the top three would get double, uh, rewards. So it would be eight hundred.
Um, I think I can, uh, take the, uh, what is this? The, the video segment by Dr. Matt Igle, the, the pod leading, um, comprehensive video, uh, you know, concise overview of, of what happened there.
That would be very welcome. I did reserve this, this option of like perhaps multiple candidates arise during this meeting and, yeah, to, to, well, then see what's happening. Um, so now would be the time for anybody to, yes. Noted. Awesome. Thank, um, I do agree. I think you, you would be able to do a great job of that. Um, any thoughts on the challenge? Like these short, uh, short videos like this? Is it something?
Is this like, um, you, you reviewed it or you, we, we have to download it and then use the real snippets of that, uh, kind of use them as a high-reel? Or what is the expectation?
Um, well, it's on YouTube. Um, the, the, the full meeting is on, on YouTube. And in the...
Yeah. Okay. I have it open. And, and actually I have seen it.
The choosing, that doesn't have to be, um, any specific topic. Can be anything you like or combination of, uh, like make some weird edit out of a bunch of different things tied together. Can be anything.
Yeah, basically, uh, we can also share the link for the video because it's two hours and fifteen minutes, so downloading it might be some troublesome. So we can share the actual link so you can download it more easily from Google Drive. Cause you, downloading video from YouTube might be an sometimes issue. Uh, after that, yeah, basically anything from anything in there, in that video, you can just snippet whatever ways you want it, just as long as it's a maximum of sixty seconds. Just good, nice quotes or something nice somebody said or ideas or, I mean, doesn't, doesn't even have to like be certain thing. It just might be something that just would look nice for SingularityNet.
Um, so, yeah, I'm pretty sure we can easily after the meeting, uh, simply, um, provide the link to that.
Uh, I want to add something here. Uh, can you hear, listen to me?
Yep.
And like, uh, like, uh, previously, uh, there was a video release, premiere released by Singularity DAO. It was that documentary type of video in which different short clips, I think, were added together to make a twenty to thirty minutes premiere. So you want us to make a twenty to thirty minutes premiere from this two-hour video?
No, no, I was aiming at, uh, the, um,
Yes, uh, I mean sixty seconds, uh, a short to the points, uh, explaining, uh, of different segments of like, uh, mindplex segment, uh, segments and, uh, and platform segments and through AGI general sections. And sixty seconds video, I mean to say. The main points, key points.
Can be main points or key points where like summarizing what's being said, sure. But it can also be something funny or, I don't know.
To a point, um, and some, some kind of explanation, main explanation.
It's, uh, looking at how do we bring the value of this? You know, this is a very big video that shares a lot of cool things, but not everybody sits down for two and a half hours to watch, unfortunately. Not everybody has the time. Um, and so how can we, how can we create, uh, bring, bring this in, in, in shorter snippets and bring value to the whole community? So that, you know, um, people can, can see the app, you know, the, the, the condensed version or just, you know, Raju's chunk or, you know, something interesting that you may not have heard before. So, so looking at some of, some of these pieces, is that kind of right, Peter?
No, I don't want to impose too much of a direction on you. Your video has to be this, uh, but yeah, that would be a perfect implementation of it.
It does have to be shortened than sixty seconds. That's the main constraint here. So that would be, so you can't just take one part of...
My second question is, uh, after making a video, where we can submit that video in, uh, through, we have to send that video to, to Discord channel in a specific channel, uh, about?
Um.
I think a question that you want to also, oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm actually saying that after I have made that video of sixty seconds, then, uh, will I need to submit that video?
I'm thinking what the uses would be, um, Renner, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, this video, first of all, yeah, the video will be submitted to us so we can go through it if it's usable. And if it is usable, you'll get your HIX and we will upload it and it will be in our SingularityNet YouTube. But, uh, as how to submit it, uh, Peter will probably, uh, do a form for it, something. And we can make, uh, one way we can make it, we can make, uh, share about, uh, Google, uh, Drive folder where you can upload it so we can see it. Uh, then you do need to add in the video name that, uh, who, who did the video also, like who edited it. But also you can just, uh, if you have Google Drive yourself, you can upload and share the link with there or any other way. Uh, WeTransfer, WeTransfer has a free, uh, sharing options. There's tons of ways to share it as long as the video gets to us.
I simply can up, uh, yes, I can simply upload to my...
Uh, we're losing you a bit? Do you...
The windows of Wi-Fi.
Can you hear me?
Okay, now we can hear you.
Now we can hear you. Oh, all right. I was, uh, actually I was telling that, uh, uh, I will upload that video in my YouTube channel, then I will share that link to you. So you can check it out.
Yeah, we can do that way also, uh, as long as you don't put it as a public video onto your YouTube channel.
All right. Uh, also I can enter Google Drive.
Yeah, e- either ways is good, as long as we get the video.
Yeah, I think I can do that more.
It's better if like it's done through a drive or WeTransfer or anything like that because then we get the uncom- uncompressed file that you originally, uh, did. So that would be just in case to, uh, keep the quality high enough. That's why I, I said we can also share the link of the full video because from downloading YouTube, you do download the compressed video, but YouTube has a compression system that keeps the quality really good. So in that sense, it's not that bad, but preferably, just in case.
Uh, I will take note of that. No problem.
I think, I think Peter can put together a document where you can like, uh, share the files and, uh, everything. We can also point out, uh, different, uh, places you can send the file to, to us.
That would be good then.
Yeah, we'll include that in the meeting notes.
All right.
Also, uh, those videos, uh, will be, uh, needed in a vertical format. Basically TikTok format.
All right, all right. I under-
And, um, the resolution should be, uh, one eighty times, uh, nineteen-twenty.
Okay, got it. Actually, my brother is a video editor and he's best...
Can you share, um, the video format in the event chat exactly?
Just stayed already. I was typing it.
And something else in the, um, event chat, I put a little question, um, to see what we together right now feel like. Um, would it make sense to have a maximum of three submissions per person for this? Or would you feel like just submit everything? Cause I, I think token-wise, we, uh, I did a little calculation that about twenty submissions would make sense. Uh, but we cannot support endless submissions, um, basically. Baron Chat, if you wouldn't mind clicking the plus or minus, uh, sign. Plus for, uh, yes, have a maximum, minus for no, no maximum. That would be great. Just to get a quick, uh, temperature, temperature check. We'll let that roll, uh, for a bit longer.
If you are sending AGIX tokens through Cardano Network, are you also calculating in the fees that you have to have a mini UTXO with one point forty-four eta in order to send tokens? Or this is done?
Certainly for now, um, that would be for the ambassador program to, to cover. Um, like that won't be, you, you wouldn't be receiving like, uh, three hundred ninety-six AGIX. You would be receiving four hundred.
Also, something that could be helpful to help this video content move the distance required to really get as much, uh, you know, traction as possible would be to have some type of an organized structure for sharing on something like Reddit, where we would be able to reach multiple demographics, um, potentially even outside of crypto, uh, as opposed to just keeping it within our keyword space that we have now and, and community.
Yeah, fair enough. Would you happen to have, to have suggestions for this, uh, for this, this specific structure? Or would that be something you?
Yeah, well, um, yeah, I think probably where to start would be the, uh, what is it? The Singularity Shareforce Volunteer Group. Um, that would probably be one place to convene and people could, you know, push content out strategically from there. Uh, but I guess it depends on every user, which, you know, community they have good karma in, et cetera. But probably, yeah, the, the, the meeting place for sharing the content would be, uh, Shareforce. I'll just link it in the, in the chat here.
Yep, thank you. Um, Robert, to answer you, um, the deadline for this video, if that's, uh, Friday, May twentieth, um, I figured that would make sense, but perhaps if, if, um, there's more people here, uh, thinking that would be a bit on the soon side of things, um, that's, yeah, we can also put it later or allow for people to work on it on the weekend or, yeah. On the temperature check for having a maximum of three submissions, most of the people, six versus two, because I voted both to create the thingies, um, would say having a maximum is a good thing. So, yeah, yeah, let's go, uh, let's go with that. Hmm, any feedback if the deadline of Friday makes any sense or perhaps too soon? Friday it is? All right, I see we're already quite a bit over time. Uh, that was actually the intention to not let happen. Um, this is pretty much a quick overview of the, uh, of the tokens. Um, I'm pretty confident we can get the translations, uh, going over the, outside of this meeting through the people who, uh, signed up on the form and, and outreach. Um, so here where it says two thousand for the video on the AI developments, um, that should be two and a half. And then the total would add up to twenty-seven K. And open for suggestions would be forty-two hundred remaining. Yeah, in light of, I was thinking like if we have, um, space to fill during this meeting, we could, uh, brainstorm a bit on how to get tasks going for this amount. Um, but I would be perfectly happy to move that discussion to the, to the chat over the coming days. Unless there's anybody who is like, uh, a short and concise suggestion? Chat it is? All right, um, that would bring us to the end of this meeting. Um, there's still a bit of room for, um, yeah, for questions, uh, random ideas or thoughts, um. And I included the link on the sheets to the feedback form for this meeting. So if you would, um, yeah, if you would like to take the time, uh, please do so. Uh, it's, uh, very interesting to, uh, and informational to see what, uh, what kind of people, what kind of feedback people provide. Uh, let's do a quick check if anybody has something to add to this meeting because now would be the time. All right, then that concludes it. Um, I'll update the, um, the notion with the, with the notes once, uh, once they are there on the motherboard. Whiteboard is working on and, yeah, the recording will be on YouTube soon with, uh, links in the description to all the relevant documents. Thanks a lot for your joining, everybody, and special thanks to those who stood up to, um, accept some, some tasks. Great stuff. Thanks for joining.